Everyone, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, December 2nd, 2024, 6:30 PM. This meeting is being recorded. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is, I call this order. Right now, we're looking at approval of minutes for November 18th, 2024.
So moved.
Good motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Number three, citizens' comments. Any but citizens? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Robyn Watson, Dresser Hill Road in Dudley. I had three quick questions. I'm signed up for the notification process for these meetings, and there's been a few. I haven't received anything.
Okay.
Last week's Board of Health and this week's Board of Selectmen for the most recent. My question is Monica left the Board of Health. Is there a plan to replace her, a specific date? Because I believe it's Board of Selectmen and Board of Health that make a joint decision on that.
I was just going to touch Mr. Chairman on that briefly during the TA report.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to answer the question, Mr. Chairman, it's the process is the Board of Health makes a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and then they vote to appoint or take any other action.
Okay. And I noticed there's a meeting coming up February 10th. Are you going to mention what's on that agenda? What the special topic is? I think it's a special meeting, February 10th.
Yep, we're gonna, Mr. Chairman, we'll when we get to that agenda item, I was gonna go over it. It's a special town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And it's actually, just to revisit the Article 8 that failed, the Eagle Drive, with a slight modification.
Okay.
But we'll have more on that in a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. We'll move on to number four, reappointments. Police Reserve Officers, one-year terms expiring December 31st, 2025. Chief Kowalski?
Just real quick, the, those two officers, they're up to date with their trainings. They're post-certified, and I don't see any issues with them. They actually saved the town some money by grabbing some of the shifts, saving overtime, and they do help out throughout the year. So I would recommend that those two officers be reappointed for another year.
Excellent. Board have any comments on Officer LaRue, Officer Conte being reappointed?
No.
And can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Officer Robbie LaRue and Officer Mario Conte, police reserve officers with a one-year term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Now we go to number five, public business. 5A Public Meeting Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Chairman, it does not look like she has joined the Zoom meeting yet. I'm gonna send her an email, but if you wouldn't mind going to a different agenda item, if that's possible.
And circle back around. Yes, okay. B, 5B Recycling Transfer Station Half-Year Permit. Board of Selectmen vote to approve issuance of half-year recycling permits or take any other action relative thereto. I saw the document, which Mr. Sigunavich was kind enough to ask for last meeting. It's in the OneDrive. And if anyone had any questions on that?
And I thank Mr. Chairman, and I thank you or whomever that was that came up with that document, that generated that document. Just so we have it, I mean, just so we have something concrete as opposed to, I mean, we had the best of intentions last meeting, but now we've got something nice, codified.
Right.
Proper. Thank you to whomever was a part of that.
It's the TA's office. Great job.
Thank you.
The Highway.
Thank you.
So what's the Board's pleasure? Reviewing, reviewing the prices and the breakdown for the permits for one year versus half-year. If it satisfied your request?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept it? To approve the issuance?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the issuance of half-year recycling permits for the recycling and transfer station based on the publication with half-year pricing, not to change the pricing for leaf and grass disposal.
Right. I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to put it on the record, this gives people the ability to purchase effective January 1st of every year, six months as opposed to 12 months of a permit. So a resident full year is $3.60. If you buy it from January, on January 1st, it will last till June 30th. It'll be $180. Veterans and first responders for a full year are $3.20. If they buy it on January 1st, it will expire on June 30th. It'll be $160. Senior resident for a full year is $2.35. Currently, if you buy it on January 1st, it'll expire June 30th, and it's $1.18. Extra bag charges remain the same with no, as Mrs. DeShane brought up. There's no change in the grass and leaf permits. And that's pretty much it. That's the rundown. It's not available any other way. It's either a full year or it's available January 1st to June 30th.
Okay.
And that was in response to a, to multiple requests that the Board of Selectmen considered something like that.
Okay. And we have a motion, a second on that. And that ends the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Let's go to 5C. Meeting schedule. Board of Selectmen vote to approve draft meeting schedule for Board of Selectmen meetings from January 2025 to June 2025. Take any action relative thereto. The meeting dates have been written up and sent out.
So the proposed dates, Mr. Chairman, are January 13th, January 27th, February 10th, February 24th, March 10th, March 24th, April 7th, April 21st, May 5th, May 19th, which will also be our annual town meeting. So that one will be at 6:30 in the cafeteria beforehand. June 2nd is a meeting, and that's a date we have to vote to set the new, to set the meeting schedule and the date for the special October town meeting. And then finally, the last one of this fiscal year will be June 23rd, 2025.
Excellent. Board have any discussion? Any comments? Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So voted. Let's go to item.
I noticed we have someone in the waiting room, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
On Zoom call.
Is that for 5A Hazard Mitigation?
Yep.
Okay, we can circle back to that right now. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you just want to open this. Just give a brief, quick opening to what we're going to be doing here, Mr.?
Okay. Olivia's been cheerleading this one, so I'll let her give the descriptions, what's happening tonight. The chief has come up, and this is, he's working updating his hazard mitigation plan. And we also have Deb Johnson from the Council on Aging to represent a demographic and take part in the meeting. And we have the Veteran Services Officer here too as well.
Excellent. Excellent. Welcome. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're joined tonight by Jamie Kaplan from Jamie Kaplan Consulting. And Chief Coach Janowski and I have been working with her on the updates to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. One of FEMA's requirements is having public meetings like this to just update on the progress of the plan. So that's what we're going to be discussing tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Where would you like to start, Chief?
Jamie, do you want to just give an overview of the plan and what we've been doing so far?
Sure, I have a PowerPoint. Can I show that?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna see if I can share my screen with you. It says that sharing isn't turned on. Is that something you can turn on? I'm a little concerned too because the advertising that we put out, this is a different Zoom link than what we had advertised for people to join this meeting.
And they're not tied in together?
What did you say?
Are the two links tied in together or no?
I don't think so. I created one, and that's what's on the flyer that you have posted online and in the press release, but this is a different link. Just fine, you have people in the room, but I don't know if anybody will try and join and not be able to.
Okay.
Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'll just run through it, and you can ask me questions as we go along. Just so you know, my firm, we're based in North Hampton. The pictures on your screen are the project leads for this. And we've been tasked by MIMA with developing hazard mitigation plans across the state. And they've given us 27 communities to work with. We've worked with several other communities, not through that project, but as you can see, we've done a lot of work in Massachusetts. We also do work nationwide, and mitigation planning is the majority of the work we're doing right now, but it's not the only thing that we do. So I'm happy to explain. Any questions about the work we do, if you have a question about that. Just to kind of run through for you as a kind of reminder of what hazard mitigation is, it's defined by FEMA as any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to life and property from hazard events. It's been proven that spending money to mitigate risk saves approximately $6 for every dollar that you spend. So if, for example, you know culvert is undersized, if you wait for that to blow out and flood a community, that's exponentially more expensive than if you spent the money to replace it or fix it. And we're looking to identify those kinds of projects that you can do to minimize risk. And our project focuses only on natural hazards, as that's a FEMA requirement that the mitigation plans look at natural hazards, and we don't go into the other kinds of man-made hazards. And we do see that mitigation planning is really a foundation for a community reducing risk. We began our project with Dudley back in July with a kickoff meeting. Our plan is to submit the plan to MIMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, in March for their review. The policy is that MIMA reviews the plan. When they're comfortable with a mitigation plan, they forward it to FEMA Region 1 for their review. When FEMA reviews the plan and decides that it meets all federal requirements, the plan comes back to the town, and it's at that time that the Select Board would need to formally adopt the plan. That's part of why I really encourage anybody that we work with in a town to involve the Select Board in the planning process. So months from now, when the plan comes to you for adoption, you'll have some idea what it is that you're adopting. Between the kickoff meeting and the final version of your plan, we put together what we call a Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee. That committee has met three times. It needs to have one more meeting. We've had this being our first public meeting. We're a little bit behind, but not serious. We'll hold another public meeting, hopefully in January. And then the public, including each of you, would have an opportunity to review the draft plan before it goes to the state. And it is a federal requirement that FEMA review an updated plan every five years. The real incentive for you all to have this hazard mitigation plan is that when communities have a FEMA-approved and town-adopted plan, you're eligible for what we call pre-disaster mitigation funding. So for instance, that culvert example I gave you, you'd be eligible to get money from FEMA to replace or upgrade a culvert, but you wouldn't be eligible for those funds without a mitigation plan in place. All right. The plan itself has these five big pieces to it, if you will. The community profile sets the stage for what's in the mitigation plan. So it really discusses, you know, what's in Dudley. Some demographic information, as well as your built natural environment are covered there. And a list of your critical facilities would be in there. Those would be places that you all rely on before, during, and after a disaster. Then the hazard risk assessment is where we list those natural hazards and describe them in detail, looking at what their impact could possibly be to the community. Your community capabilities portion of the plan looks at the town's capacity to mitigate risk. And then the mitigation strategy really pulls all of that together into a list of what we call mitigation actions, which are really these projects that the town hopes to do to lessen the risks that we've identified. So your risk assessment chapter will end with what we call problem statements, and your capability assessment ends with some recommendations. And we really pull those two together with input from our committee, which is led by the chief, into your mitigation strategy. And then we finish the plan with implementation and maintenance, you know, how you're going to implement this plan and maintain it for the next five years. Just so you are all aware, we started our process by looking at your plan from 2019. We're updating that plan. We're also looking at your Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan from 2020, trying to glean from each of those what's worked, what hacks have worked, and what do we need to move forward. It's also a federal requirement that your plan be consistent with the state's plan, which was recently updated at the end of 2023. We do make a big effort to make sure that your plan is consistent, your mitigation plan is consistent with other plans that you may have in place in the community. So our Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee is pretty lean. Typically, we like to flush it out with some more participants, but we have consistently had the fire chief and obviously town administrator and interim town planner have participated. And we look to our Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee to provide us with supporting data and information, assist with getting the outreach for things like this meeting. And we want to make sure that they help identify mitigation actions and ultimately review and comment on the draft plan. One thing that I let them know frequently is we are experts at our jobs. We're good at developing these plans, but I don't like to tell a community, here's what you should do. We give some recommendations, but I think, for instance, somebody like the Highway Superintendent is well aware of which roads and, you know, what other infrastructure may need to be improved or replaced. And it's those projects that I want to make sure get into our plan and that we're really making a case for the implementation of those projects. So I try to push what your agenda is forward with the plan. Looking ahead to the risk assessment, which is where we're looking at all of the hazards that can possibly occur in the community. And for each of those hazards, we want to identify where it may occur. For instance, some of your hazards would be what I would consider atmospheric hazards. I'm personally in North Hampton. It's freezing today, right? So extreme temperatures are something that you would see across the board, regardless of which part of a town you're in. Whereas something like flooding is going to occur either near your dams or near other water bodies or in an area where you'd have inadequate stormwater systems. So we identify the location. We look at extent, which covers the real range of what's possible. That's the magnitude, for instance, if it was an earthquake, or the strength of a storm, of what's possible. We want to look backwards to what has previously occurred in your community, as well as across the state, and then look forwards to what's probable. How do we think that these hazards may occur? And then we're looking at your community assets. And this is what's in that first chapter that I talked to you about before, the community profile. So we want to look at your population and your built environment, as well as your natural environment and the economy, so larger businesses. And then where those hazards intersect with the community assets, that's where the risk is. And it's that risk that we're trying to identify what it is, explain it, and then come up with these mitigation actions to address it. So that's kind of what we see in the plan. This is the list of the natural hazards that we've got in your plan at the moment. I think you'll agree that we've come up with all of them. We have to include all of the hazards that are possible and all that are in the state's plan. Hazards that are in the state plan that are not in yours would be those that are not relevant to you. So for instance, anything like tsunami, which would be in a coastal plan but not in yours. So we mentioned that right up front. All right. And we also look at climate change. And we're considering climate change in terms of how it impacts the list of hazards. And if you are interested in climate change and haven't taken a look at the climate change assessment that the state did, it's definitely worth a look. But we went through it carefully, and it's included in your plan. Each of the hazards gets a full profile. This chapter of your plan is always the longest. So we're looking at all of the different vulnerabilities and impacts for each hazard. I mean, and each of the hazards starts with a very basic, you know, like almost elementary school definition. What is a flood? What is an earthquake? All the way to some real detail, and then a vulnerability assessment that includes economic impacts. All right. And as I mentioned before, we think about critical facilities, and they're often used to describe structures necessary for a community to respond and recover. So you may be thinking of fire stations and police stations and what have you. But we make a list that's relevant for each community. So, you know, some communities don't have a large hospital. Doesn't matter. You might have an urgent care place or something. So we work with you to identify what's considered critical. And typically, those are going to be facilities that the town owns because because you can mitigate risk to them. All right. And just as an example, I know this is hard to see on small screens, but, um, we map the intersection of these hazards. We sort of overlay the hazards onto your built environment, um, and sometimes to the population as well. So here's just an example of what the flood risk can look like. And you can see we're, we're thinking about, okay, there's 22 single-family homes of that may be impacted, um, and we've mentioned here, not on the flood plain, but vulnerable would be fire, station, police station, sewer plant, um, et cetera. So these are things that we come up with and help to identify, again, do you need to mitigate risk to these facilities? The other thing that we're looking at carefully is dam risk. So, uh, this gives you a sense of where the dams are located. Uh, we are going to have a meeting specifically about the, um, the dams, uh, coming up in the next, uh, probably in January, if not this month. All right. Um, then finally, uh, any good plan has goal statements. So your plan will have, um, goals that are really just broad policy vision statements of things like saving lives and property. Um, and then your mitigation actions are very specific. And this is the part of the planning process that we're in now. We're just finishing that risk analysis and headed into your mitigation actions, developing the new list of mitigation actions. Uh, and just some food for thought for all of you. When we look to come up with mitigation actions, we're really looking to solve problems, um, that we've identified. And those solutions can come in these four categories. Um, and sometimes, depending on what the problem is, if you will, you may have solutions in more than one of these categories. Uh, so for instance, local plans and regulations, this is things like, you know, the state has building codes that you adhere to. It could be zoning regulations. It could be any type of, um, like your municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, that kind of thing. Your structure and infrastructure projects, always easy to identify. Fix this bridge or replace that culvert or move something out of the flood plain. Tends to be big budget, but easy to come up with. Uh, your natural systems protection, this is where we're trying to preserve or restore functions of natural systems. And, you know, we've seen that if we allow rivers to flow where they're designed to, um, that prevents flooding as opposed to trying to like shore them up in a certain way or, or, um, not let the water go where it wants to. And then education awareness programs. They're my personal favorite. I think that they're the least expensive. Uh, but biggest bang for your buck, if you have a well-informed and, um, prepared community, you're more likely to have a resilient community. So that's how we get to our mitigation actions. And our second public meeting would really focus on what are the mitigation actions that we've identified for your community. So hopefully we'll have our public meeting in January and then you'll review the plan in February. Um, and I have one other slide that I just wanted to show you. Just this kind of food for thought when you start thinking about, um, hazard mitigation and what a community can do. You should also think in terms of what you and your, your family, your neighbors can do. And so this, um, graphic came right off of the ready.gov website, which I think is pretty good. Um, so obviously, there's some things that all of us can do. And, and that's my contact information. But I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has about the plan.
Great job, Jamie. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jamie, we brought in, um, like I mentioned earlier, the, um, Council on Aging Director and the Veteran Services Officer. And you, you've mentioned that we were a little bit light on the Hazardous Mitigation Committee. So as long, you know, they're still here. So maybe we could add them into the...
Please.
Okay, great.
Let's make sure we get them to come to our next meeting. That would be great.
And appreciated. Sir, you have a question?
Yeah, Jerry Frank from Causeway Shores Road. Um, it looks like you, your plan is like really involved with the mitigation end of it. But, um, I know I've done like volunteer work with the Red Cross and, you know, after these things. And you're not, there's not much in there that I see about what to do afterwards. You know, like, you know, you don't want to wait until the disaster happens to set up a sh- you know, how you're going to work a shelter for people, for example, if there's flooding or a fire. So I think the after stuff is very, really important and that really needs a lot of community input because if people don't know what to do after, um, a disaster, it just makes it that much harder to, to implement it and to get it going. And there's just a lot of stuff about that. So, um, is that going to be part of this plan?
Chief.
Um, that was... I can answer that. I can answer it. Um, that, that end of it is covered in the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, which was just recently updated when I brought MEMA out here and we presented the updated plan at one of the previous selectmen's meetings. All the things about the shelters and everything are in there. As you know, we ran a shelter at the middle school in 2013. So we're all up to date on that. Um, all the Red Cross stuff is in that plan, which is also on the MEMA website that people can view.
Excellent. Does that answer your questions, sir?
Yeah. I think if I could tag on to that one thing that's kind of important, based on what you said, is this, the mitigation plan would identify if, for instance, your shelter didn't meet Red Cross standards and if you, if the shelter needed something like a generator or that, that would go into the mitigation plan. But, um, as the fire chief mentioned, everything else is in that, um, comprehensive plan.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anybody have anything else?
I just wanted to bring up one to...
Mr. Frank has it.
Sorry. I can't see. I'm not looking that way.
No, I just wanted, this is a small thing, but I know you, you had a list of the dams. And I know that, noticed that Baker Pond Dam was not on there. And that dam there, actually not the dam, but the culvert at the bottom of the dam has caused flooding to homes in the past when we've had heavy rain. So, um...
Okay.
I don't know why that dam isn't on there, but...
I'll make sure to get it, um, to look into that. And then if, if maybe we'll add it. And we can look specifically at the culvert that you said that's causing flooding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it called something different on the list? I think it's called, uh...
I'm not positive. I'll have to look at it.
Yeah, I think it's called Gore Pond, as, as opposed to Baker Pond. That's, but it is on a list.
Oh, it is up there on the list, just under another name?
It wasn't on the list that you showed. It's Gore, it's Gore Pond.
Yeah.
And Gore Pond was on that list that they put up?
Okay.
Sorry, we can add it. Um, just that was one thing I was going to mention. Dams are the, what were really focused on. One of the main things we're focused on, like the, uh, aquifer from Mason Road all the way down to the other end of, um, Schofield Ave, you know, replacing the culvert under, um, West Main Street. Um, and then the other area of mention would be the, down by Yummy's Restaurant, which is Wheelock Dam, I believe, that causes the flooding there. So those are two of the high points that I wanted to point out that we're, we're trying to make that a focal point of the plan because if we can get money to replace that culvert, that would really help things. Plus dams are the focal point of it anyway, because that's what we have problems with.
Okay. Good. Uh, anything else? From anybody? No concerns? Because of next meeting, what, January, then the review from the committees in February, then it goes to MEMA? Is that it? Okay.
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Jamie sends me the spreadsheets. I've been working on updating them. There's a lot of tabs on those spreadsheets. They're very involved. So, um, some of the stuff, I, most of the stuff I can answer as emergency manager, but other stuff, I need the other departments to chime in because some questions I can't answer.
Okay. And they've been identified, though. You know what areas?
Yeah. It's super important, in my view, that Dean have a lot of support on this because we're not looking to respond to a disaster. We're looking to mitigate risk, which goes to a lot of how you use land and where the hazards are. Uh, we're not wait, you know, it's not about waiting for a bell to go off. It's about preventing anything from happening. So we can't stop, you know, high winds, extreme temperatures, what have you, but we don't want you to have disasters. And it's those activities you can do to not have a disaster is what we want to implement.
Like, like, like I, like, um, Jamie said earlier, that if this is updated and goes through and gets approved, it opens up a lot of grant money, like we could get grant funding to replace that culvert. We can get grant funding to either upgrade a dam or remove a dam, which costs a lot of money that we don't have. So, and it could, and like she said, it'll prevent the disaster from ever happening. The flooding won't happen anymore.
Right. And you save $6 per every $1 spent. And, and I agree, the awareness and education is going to be huge.
Yeah, it's worth it. I mean, it's not, you know, a super exciting process all the time, but, um, but it's certainly worth everybody's, uh, attention.
That's excellent. Yes, I agree. Uh, anybody else have anything they want to say? I mean, the, the great presentation, Jamie, and I thank you very much, and the committee, and the new members of the committee for doing so much hard work. Uh, it's really noticeable and we're going to get this moving forward. And we're going to open up those doors for the grants and, uh, go with regulation compliance and, and, uh, build that up and get a solid base. And I thank you for the input and the questions. If there's nothing else.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Can you make sure that I have a full list of everybody who's come to the meeting today? Because, uh, FEMA requires that we include that.
Absolutely.
So it'll show in your plan. Thank you.
Beautiful. You have anything else, Mr.?
Nope.
Chief, you have anything else?
No.
Thank you very much, Jamie. Be safe and warm.
All right, you two take care. It's freezing today.
Yes, okay. Bye-bye.
Bye.
That was great.
Maybe we should surround a pad and just have everybody here sign in.
Okay, if, if that's, that, those were great questions. Um, good information. So we've just got to move forward with that. Uh, we'll go down to, um, 5D on the agenda. Uh, Board of Selectmen vote to call. Special Town Meeting on February 10th, 2025. Take any other action relative thereto?
Mr. Chairman, it, um, you recall, Article 8 at the town meeting, uh, did not pass, which included $600,000 for, um, the design phase of the Eagle Drive Waterline Project. I know a lot of people are anxious to see what the final cost will be on that project. We can't, we can't give a final cost with any degree of accuracy until we actually design the project. So that's what part of that, most of that grant was being used for. Um, the good news is that we actually have been awarded that grant since then. So we get a $600,000 grant to fund the design phase of the Eagle Drive Waterline Project. And the grant, in, in achieving that amount of money, the grant reduces the amount of borrowing which was, which will be needed, which was predicated on the Article 8, which failed. But we do still have to pay for the cost of Eagle Drive for the Poet Systems that we've, uh, borrowed for in the past and installed to, you know, treat the private wells on that, on that road, continue testing and, um, changing out filters and do all the things that we're required to do. And I say required with a capital R, required to do, uh, according to the DEP. So, um, we'll have an opportunity, if the Board so chooses to call another special town meeting, February 10th would be what I would recommend, to revisit that one question. Instead of a $900,000 borrowing article, we have the $600,000 removed from that equation. It will cost about $300,000 to continue to meet our responsibilities on that street in terms of, uh, the filtration systems and the testing and everything that we're required to do there. So we're asking the Board of Selectmen to consider calling a town meeting for February 10th, um, of next year. We've already arranged, we've already made sure that the auditorium is available. And then following that, uh, if the Board so chooses to vote to call that special town meeting, the next vote would be to open a warrant to citizen petitions for a certain period of time. But that amount is going to, we're going to have to pay that amount of money, whether we borrow it or whether we take it out of this year's budget, next year's budget. Um, we have to, we have to pay those costs. It's not an option.
Is that the $300,000 you're talking about?
That's correct.
We have to pay?
We have to pay. We're in there, we're under an order to do that.
Okay, that's a requirement. That goes with the filtration and testing?
Filtration, testing, monitoring, replacement, installation, everything we're required to do until we can get a water line down there and, and end that ongoing annual cost.
And planning? Does that have to do with the planning, that money? Is that a different cost?
That is simply cost associated with remediation and mitigation.
Okay. We, before we get too far down into that, um, are there any questions from the, uh, Board? Any comments? Mr. Sigourney?
Mr. Ruda, um, how much does it cost on an annualized basis for, for our obligations at Eagle Drive? As far as testing, the Poet Systems, there's maintenance. We have, we have to pay someone to go change the filters and dispose of those, correct? Total cost, what is, what's the annualized cost on that?
Well, it would be a false average because when we started off, we were, we're still within that 500-foot testing bubble. So we're almost to the end of that. I believe we are at the end of the testing. Going out another 500 feet as we, you know, there's no residents beyond the last area tested. So the costs are coming down. The initial higher costs, we're averaging $400,000 to $500,000 for the first two years. We covered it with ARPA to the extent we could. We borrowed for it in '23. We failed to borrow the money to cover 24 expenses.
But could I, could I revise that question? What would be the ongoing annualized costs now that we don't have to test anymore? So that would be the maintenance of what we've got now, correct?
It would be the maintenance. It would be, I hate to be tied down to a number. I would say...
Range?
A range of $200,000 to $400,000 annually. And you take into account if a system fails, if, you know, the, the cartridges themselves, if they've, if that home is being treated for radon and considered hazardous material and have to be changed out. And they've only been in place, some of them, for less than a year. So in order to gauge the cost, we'd have to have a little bit more time to, to give you an accurate representation. But we started at the high end at 500. We'd be in a range of probably maximum $400,000, but more like 2, 250, ongoing costs.
How long are those, do those costs go on for? Is this in perpetuity?
We own it forever. Or we put water, public water line down that street. And that solves the problem and it's, it's a done deal.
So, so basically, it's, do we want to pay X amount of dollars every year forever? And that, certainly with inflation, that cost will go up over time. Or did we rip the Band-Aid off and just fix the problem? So this study is to find out how much it would cost to fix, to rip off the Band-Aid?
Correct. When we know how much it costs, we'll know, we have other people we're dealing with. We're dealing with our own water sewer commissioners through the enterprise account. We're dealing with Gentex. There's grant opportunities available. There's borrowing opportunities available. And we have the general fund side of government. So there are different sources of funding. We just have to know what the cost is going to be before we can negotiate who's paying for what. Uh, it, it's not at all likely that the town is going to pay, the town meeting, the... Outside of the enterprise account, it's going to pay 100% of the cost. There are other opportunities available. But we need to know what the final cost is to see how much we can, we can... to see how much we can, we can recover from other sources.
Could I keep going? I don't want to monopolize.
Absolutely.
So you mentioned grant opportunities. Are there grant opportunities for the maintenance of the Poet systems? Or is it grant opportunities for the water line or both?
So we met, the finance team met last week and, um, Rich's office, the treasurer's office is going to pull invoices from all of the money we've spent for mitigation expenses through safe well, through engineering, any, anything that is qualified for reimbursement. So there is currently a, a grant from the same source of funding that we got our $600,000 from, available for mitigation costs. So that's, my, my next step is to put in for reimbursement to date. With that reimbursement money, we would move that forward into, you know, whatever made sense at that point. But it's, it's not a, it's not an upfront cost. They don't give, they don't write you a blank check, you have to expend the money first. And it's for as long as that grant funding is available, and DEP seems to be a little bit skeptical that it's going to be available much past January. Um, for as long as those funding opportunities are available, we will put in for reimbursement. It's not guaranteed, it's competitive, and it's got a shelf life on it. But there is no, to answer your question, there's no source of funding that will just pay ongoing costs forever in perpetuity.
Yeah, I, I think we've got to let people know this. When they vote, I, I just want everyone to be clear what they're voting on. Facts, that's all, that's all. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Madam?
I hate to ask the worst-case scenario question, but I'm going to ask. If, uh, if we have a special town meeting and it fails one more time, like what, when you say that we need to, we'll have to pull the funding from somewhere, like, I know we haven't started looking at it yet, most likely, but where in the budget is there room for that?
We'll have to find room because
Okay.
We, we're already committed to, under an order, to maintain these systems, to test these systems, to install these systems, so we can't just simply walk away. So a bill is going to come due, and it's going to be about 300,000 bucks. We have to pay the bill. Or we have to pay the bill through a court order after we get sued by one or two or multiple parties to do, you know, in order to recover the money. So it's not, it's not a good scenario. If we borrow the money, we're managing the finances, we're managing the problem, we're planning, you know, to try to get out from underneath it. If we just get mad and say no to stuff, we've lost control over it and then the courts will take over and the regulatory agencies take over.
And we're looking obviously at having to spend more money in the long run, once the courts are involved and once there are lawsuits, regardless of how contentious they are or whatever the case is, because now we're going to be making do on the, the bills that we already owe, plus whatever the court costs are.
If we, if we get a judgment against us, which if we just say no, we're not paying the bills, I can't see any way around a judgment, you know, going in our favor. If we just say no, we're not paying the bills, if we get a judgment against us, it will go right on the tax rate to pay the judgment. There's no override vote, it doesn't get left up to the citizens to vote on it, to try to work together as a community, manage the problem. It just goes on the tax rate if we get a judgment against us. And you all know this because we had executive session, and I'm just saying that because I think people need to hear it. It's not, it's not playing around anymore.
And that, that's through legal? That's not Jonathan Ruda, that's through legal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing?
Sir?
This isn't a question, this is just a statement and I'm, this is just me talking, I'm not including any of my colleagues. I know a few years ago, we had some budget issues and I, I voted to lay off some people. I'm not doing that again. I'm not, we're not, this isn't a, we're not laying off public safety, we're not laying off employment, we're not, we can't, not doing that, not going down that road again. We're going to, we're going to have a town meeting, special town meeting if it goes through, and we're all going to talk about this and we're all going to figure this out like adults. There's going to be information and it's going to be yes or no, and whatever happens happens, and that's it. I just wanted to state that for the record, I'm not voting to cut anything. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Anybody have any comments from the audience? No? Okay. So then I'd ask the board what they would like to do if they want to make a motion to call a special town meeting on February 10th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen call a special town meeting on February 10th, 2025.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Sir?
Do we need any more information in that motion? Do you need specific where dates? I, I, there's a date, but like where, time?
Time and location.
Anything like that? Would you like that added to it?
If you want, it would be great if you added 7:00 PM at Shepherd Hill Auditorium.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion. I'd like to add 7:00 PM at the Shepherd Hill Regional High School Auditorium, if it's all right with the second.
Yes.
And it's all right with the second?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. 5E. Board of Selectmen vote to open special town meeting warrant to citizen petitions on 1/13/25 at 9:00 AM and close on 1/21/25 at 9:00 AM. What the board like to do?
Could we talk about this?
Absolutely.
I, I, I see no negatives to that. If people want to put something on to talk about, so be it. Uh, we, we always tell people to vote, and if they want something they want to vote on, we should allow them to do it. We want people to show up. Uh, we should follow the process, democratic process. So, um, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to open the special town meeting warrant to citizen petitions on January 13th, '24 at 9:00 AM and to close on 1/21/2025 at 9:00 AM.
Did you mean 1/13/25, sir?
I was reading 1/13/20, okay. I, I
Scriptless error.
Okay, I, I would like to amend my motion to vote to open the special town meeting warrant to citizen petitions on January 13th, 2025 at 9:00 AM and close on January 21st, 2025 at 9:00 AM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I'll, I'll be writing '24 on checks for a few months and, that's all.
I'm still doing it.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Uh, number six, Town Administrator's Report.
Well, we've chipped away at it a lot tonight, Mr. Chairman. We received an update from Congressman Neal's office confirming that funding for the bridge replacement has been earmarked, we can expect a formal award notice to be issued. This is from Congressman Neal's office, not Town Administrator's office. We can expect a formal award notice to be issued in March of 2025. That's for the bill, for the, for the bridge.
Right. Wow.
Hill Street Bridge?
Yeah.
Going to get fixed?
It's going to get fixed with that temporary solution that we came up with at last 25, yes.
People will be able to drive?
Yeah. Well, again, we've been on Congressman Neal, legislators have gotten involved and that's what they're telling us. It's been earmarked and ready to go.
Good job on that. Whoever had that.
We also got $50,000 in grant money for property inventory assessment, and that will be carried out by CMRPC. It's for the Marino Jericho neighborhood, and it will provide valuable data on property conditions, which will help to plan future improvements for the neighborhood. In other words, we'll be eligible for more grants if we get this, uh, inventory data completed. Instead of having to do it in advance of every grant application, we'll have it, it'll be ready to go.
Okay.
And then, um, my office is scheduling several meetings with the developers of the Stevens Mill, um, project. Uh, that will include one upcoming public update at a future Board of Selectmen meeting, and we're starting to fill up the agenda pretty quick, but we're probably going to have that before January, the end of January. We'll have some sort of an update.
Okay.
Just to give the public an update as to what's going on with it.
Right. Some motion moving forward?
Any other stuff we already covered, Mr. Chairman, so I'm all set.
Okay. Uh, anything from the ATA HR?
Not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So then I will go to Department Communications. Start with, um, Police Chief?
Uh, just real quick, December starts our impaired driving, um, uh, extra patrols. Uh, this is a grant from the state that we received, uh, so officers are going to be out there a little more, uh, looking for impaired drivers. Uh, still doing the toy drive, looking, uh, for people to donate, uh, any, uh, new unwrapped toys and also if they want to make any donations to Dudley Police Association, uh, and then towards, uh, towards our drive, they can go out and buy toys as needed. And also, good news, um, our canine, uh, Maverick was certified last week, um, so he is now part of the, uh, um, the regional task force and also, um, certified for search, um, rescue, article searches. Uh, he was certified by a group and they said that he was probably one of the, uh, one of the best dogs they've had in quite a while, so very proud of that. Other than that, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Fire?
Good evening. Uh, two things, the burning ban that was in effect statewide has been lifted. It was lifted last Wednesday. With that in mind, people can use chimney airs again, ornamental fires within reason, uh, no barn fires, we will go put those out. Um, burning of brush is only allowed from January 15th to May 1st with a permit. Um, agriculture, agricultural burning is allowed year-round with a permit for people at a Zone Chapter 60, 61, um, which the assessor has a list of those properties. And, uh, we're also doing our toy drive, Toys for Tots in conjunction with, uh, the Marine Corps League in Worcester. Um, the boxes are in the fire department lobby so people can drop toys off there through December.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Highway?
Uh, the highway department is still looking for private snowplow drivers. We have five open spots right now, so we're going to be kind of shorthanded with snow flies, so just, we're going to have to take it easy and we're just going to have to work through it right now. We have five open slots at the moment.
Wow, okay. All the, all the advertisement is out there and everything?
Yeah, we're getting it out there, we have, um, you can apply online, or come to the town hall, put an application in. It's, uh, private plowers is where, I think it's listed at 32 an hour, and a town truck. Um, but like I said, we're still very shorthanded right now.
Mr. Sigunovich?
What, what would the qualifications be? Do they need a Class B or is?
No, we have, um, we have pickup truck runs and, uh, one-ton runs, so I think you just have to need a, a medical card to ride, drive them, and they, um, they also come in and do a quarry check and be a town employee.
This is for a town supplied truck?
It's a, it's a town supplied truck, you could become a part-time town employee, so you're actually on, on a town payroll, and it's just on a regular snowplow in hours.
Thank you.
Super.
So we're going to probably be shorthanded if it snows, so if we're going to get snow, it's just going to take us longer to get our runs done right now.
Okay.
So just have to bear with us at the moment.
Super, thank you. Water sewer?
So let everybody know, the sewer project down on Mill Street is starting to wind down. Um, once they're complete, uh, the road will stay the way it is, let everybody run on it, uh, so they can, uh, get ready, prepare for when it gets warmer and, uh, do the repave job, so.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Johnson, Council on Aging?
We've started a few new programs in the, in the senior center. Uh, one is a book club, and I was really surprised, I, I have 14 members, we work with the library, I go and they get 14 books for me, I pick them up, and we, we meet once a month, and it's been great discussion, it's been a wonderful program. Uh, we also are due, with the volunteers that I have who are wonderful, we have a potluck lunch the third, fourth Wednesday of the month. We cook a full meal, uh, we have between 40 to 45, um, people come for lunch, as well as Memory Cafe has increased to approximately 40 to 45 people. With the entertainment and the cooking, they, they like it when we, when we make meal. So it's been quite active, so I'm very happy about that.
Beautiful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work. Veteran service officer, Mr. Rogerson?
Uh, good afternoon, good evening, uh, Chairman. I have nothing much to add. I was up about a month ago and went over all the training I was going through and we still kind of pick up the pieces and moving forward. You know, we're getting ready to pass out, um, turkey baskets, uh, for the veterans and the families, uh, right before Christmas.
Oh, good.
But nothing more really to bring up the speed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Veterans Day went very well. Make sure you pass that along to all the veterans, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And non-veterans, like, we're involved and made that happen.
Yeah, appreciate it, appreciate your support.
Thank you. Uh, Treasurer Collector, Mr. Kamignani?
Good evening. We'll, we'll keep it brief. Everybody knows the Medicare rates for the town have been approved. Those go into effect, uh, January 1st. Anybody who's a retiree of the town, its status quo, you have one option, it's the medics too. It is a better plan than perhaps Joe Namath, um, Broadway Joe Kadarphi on the, on the TV. Uh, also, everybody knows that when you retire from the town of Dudley and you go on a Medicare plan, it's yours until you pass, there's a surviving spouse benefit. Um, water and sewer bills are due on the 12th. The unpaid amounts from the previous fiscal year at one point will be leaned to the third quarter real estate bills, so it's almost a one-day thing. If there's something that's outstanding, you have a question on it, we're here to answer those questions. And we do our best to time your water and, uh, your creation of the real estate bills, so if you made a payment on the 3rd of December, we'd like it reflected so that if the bills went out on the 10th, the 20th, whatever. Um, by statute, they need to be out by January 1st, to be due by February 1st. We'll try to get that ahead of time, we print them in-house, they're processed outside of house. Uh, quick note on the processing, um, the discount we, we receive pretty much matches what the postage would be when we run it through the meter. So for 69 cents, uh, our metered mail versus the vendor going through, applying the Indisha in addition to sorting the envelopes and getting everything processed, it's a penny or two different, so it's well worth the extra. We wouldn't be able to save that money in, uh, in-house. Always like to add on a good note, I had somebody already today, where's my tax bill for January 1st? We had somebody ask. Again, a lot of familiar faces, if you want to know the amounts and what have you, we'd be happy, if the actual bills aren't done, um, call maybe after the 15th and we'll be able to arrange something, because a lot of people are fortunate enough to head south for the wintertime. Other than that, um, agree with the board, uh, best foot forward for the upcoming special town meeting, it's an obligation, and it's something that needs to be taken care of. So it's a, it's a wise choice, I'd like to see some success, you know, on the day of the meeting. Other than that, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Board member comments? Mr. Sigunovich?
Lot of good information tonight. Um, every meeting, we've got citizen comments, if anyone has any questions or comments about that upcoming special town meeting, uh, please feel free. As always, the Chair feel free. As always, the chair currently and in the past has always let people speak, ask questions. As long as you're not using foul language or threatening anyone, we can have a nice civil discussion. It's how good things happen. That's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clark?
I, I just have one thing that I kind of want to call attention to. So a couple of weeks ago, we wrapped up the Citizens' Fire Academy that was run through the fire department. There was a small class of, of people, including Ms. Antonson. And we had a blast. It was eight weeks figuring out and being told about all the different things that the fire department does, which is so much more wide-ranging than anybody off the street knows. If these opportunities come up, I, I cannot stress enough how wonderful they are. I want to publicly thank the chief and KP and Alan for being fabulous instructors and working with us. I, that gear is heavy. You guys, that gear is so heavy. It's incredible the things that they do. So I just, you know, it's one arm of the town that is, is really kind of like a gem for us. So thank you again for, for inviting, you know, people to come on in and like see it firsthand a little bit.
Thank you.
Excellent. I just want to bring up a couple of things. So we went through Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Santa Claus went through town. That was a great success. I heard that Frosty was with him, but they disappeared again. They will be back. We have, on the 5th, this Thursday, the Christmas tree lighting here. So that's going to be another nice event with food and, and soft drinks and, and nice things happening. So please, show up to that. Looking forward, as we all are, to the special town meeting. And my, my stance, obviously we need the money to move forward. We don't want to make cuts here in town. One thing that I've always been avid about and not shy about saying is, I, I will not entertain any cuts to public safety. That's not going to happen. Never have, never will. So let's move forward on that and, and do the best that we can. But we got to make it happen, please. I'm begging, please. We got to make it happen. So we can move forward, then we can work off of grants and build that up. And we won't have all these little worries that we're not meeting our requirements. Anything with the TA's office? HR? No. Okay. Then at this time, the board moves to enter into executive session under General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 21, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, not to reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Sigunovich, aye.
Janet Duchesne, aye.
Mark Landry, aye. So moved. Thank you, everybody.